The Planning and Zoning Board Meeting is being held with a quorum of board members physically in attendance at the Westlake Council Chambers, 4005 Seminole Pratt Whitney Road. Board Chair, I have a few preliminary matters. This is Zoe Burgess, City Clerk. Chair Roger Manning, Vice Mayor Katrina Long Robinson, Board Member Patrick Paul is absent. Board Member Kara Crump is attending virtually, and Board Member John Paul O'Connor is present physically. City Manager Kenneth Castle, City Attorney Pam Booker, Planning and Zoning Director Nilsa Zacharias, Engineering Director Suzanne Dombrowski are physically in attendance. City Clerk Zoe Burgess is physically in attendance. Public comments may be accepted at least 24 hours prior to the meeting utilizing the electronic comment card available on the city's website. Public comments are also permitted at the appropriate time during the meeting. The Chair will call for such during public comment, and you may participate at this time utilizing the system's virtual hand feature and waiting to be acknowledged if you wish to comment. Please note this meeting is being recorded, both voice and video, and to remember your mic may be live. I will mute any microphones that carry any feedback or interruptions. However, you can unmute yourself. Any person in the virtual meeting causing a disruption or being inappropriate will be removed from the meeting. If I may also remind those physically in attendance, please project your voice and speak clearly so that a recording of the meeting is produced. Thank you, Chair Manning.
Thank you. Now can we have a roll call, please?
Board Member John Paul O'Connor.
Present.
Board Member Kara Crump.
Present.
Board Member Patrick Paul is not in attendance. Vice Chair Katrina Long Robinson.
Present.
Chair Roger Manning.
Present.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Please step into the place, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, tonight we have a oath of office for our new alternative board member, PNC, Francisco Castoya. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Castle. Actually, uh... Nobody's in here. Okay, sure.
Since, uh... How do I put this, Zoe? Since we broke the air conditioning where Zoe normally hangs out, she had on over here tonight.
Good afternoon.
You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Francisco, Zoe Junior.
Do solemnly swear that I will support... That I will support?
That I will support.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
Protect and defend the Constitution.
And government of the United States.
And government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
The state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
A Planning and Zoning Board member.
A Planning and Zoning Board member.
Of the city of Westlake, Florida.
Of the city of Westlake, Florida.
On which I am now about to enter.
I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, you're official. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for, uh, for serving, Mr. Williams, since there's an open seat. Should we get a speaker right now? He is an alternate, and, uh...
Yes.
Yes, sir. We can use him, so...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, Houston's coming in.
Why don't you take, uh, take a seat up here?
It's a small seat. From the corner. This is Westlake. It's go, go, go.
Well, there you go. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir. Congratulations. It's not often you break somebody in just like that, you know? We have a motion for approval on the agenda this evening.
One of the motions are approved this evening by the Board meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the agenda by Vice Mayor Long Robinson, seconded by Board Member O'Connor. Councilwoman Crump.
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Connor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Long Robinson.
Yeah.
Mayor Manning.
Yes.
Board Member Castoya.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
One more second, please. I thought I had another dead right here. Yes, I don't. You have that paperwork right on the other side of here. There's a Planning and Zoning Agenda there for it. That one right there. I think the top one, I think, is what it is. Yes, here's the... Okay, we have, uh, next approval of minutes. Minutes for July 8, 2019. Just gonna ask, uh, why are we getting the minutes of Ju- uh, July 8, 2019?
We have another PNC meeting scheduled last night.
Really? It's like that? It's been over a year?
Yes, for PNC. Everything else has been within the parameters that didn't require a PNC meeting.
Yeah.
We've accomplished quite a bit without them.
Take a look outside. Okay, so, we have a motion for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Long Robinson, seconded by Board Member Castoya. Roll call. Board Member Castoya.
Yes.
Board Member Crump.
Yes.
Board Member O'Connor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Long Robinson.
Yeah.
Chair Manning.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our public comments portion. This section of the agenda allows for comments when published to speak on any item not presented on the agenda. Each speaker will begin a total of three minutes to comment. The public comment cards should be completed and returned to the city clerk. When you are called to speak, please go to the podium or your microphone, and prior to addressing the court, state your name and address for the record.
Ms. Dewey, are you on the line? Do you have a comment for this section of the agenda?
Zoe, I don't. I'm just available if there's any questions about the pending application.
Thank you. We receive no additional public comment cards. However, we'll give the virtual audience a moment to raise their virtual hand. If you have a comment, please raise your virtual hand or unmute your device, state your name and address. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your virtual hand, state your name and address. Chair, I see no virtual hands.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the new business. This is, uh, variance 2021 dash zero one, variance application for Pod M2, crossings of West Westlake, 130 attached single family towns in the Maritimes zoning district.
Yes. Good evening.
As you chair.
Yes. Mister Chair, board members, uh, for the record, Nilsa Zacharias, Planning and Zoning Director for the city of Westlake. So, we have a presentation. It was right here. Now it's, uh, went away. So... There it is. The presentation that is in front of you today is for the Planning and Zoning Board hearing, crossings, and two part. It's a variance application. No, we, we actually...
It's working, right?
It was working to the end. We actually did that. The crossings at, uh, is located on Pod M2. As these are graphic shows, it's south of Pod L, and is also between Pod PC5, which is the tax collector building, and it's, uh, between SkyCo, which is on M1. The entrance to, uh, this, uh, development is through Town Center Parkway. The applicant is requesting a variance approval to allow 80% of the streets in this Pod M2, the crossings, where the interim city county code requires a maximum of 20% of the dead-end streets. Let's see the background of this, uh, initiative. Crossing, conceited of 130 attached single-family townhome units located on Pod M2, 15.57 acres. As you recall, the council had approved with a condition that flat, uh, on March 8, 2021. So, in our previous March meeting. But it was approved with a condition, and the condition is based on this variance application. So, and the variance is to allow 80% of the dead-end streets where the interim code allows, uh, requires a maximum of 20% dead-end. Maybe it's been a little past. It's not cooperating.
Right, I thought too. Yeah.
So, let's talk a little bit about the overall site plan. So, again, the gross total acreage is 15.57. The number of units is 130 units, and they are townhomes or attached single-family building units. The proposed density is 8.35 BUs, building units per acre. This is on the R2 land use and zoning district, and the code allows 12 dueling units per acre. So, the maximum amount of units that could be in this, uh, site is 186 units, but the applicant is proposing 130 units. So, um, as you recall last time, that in March, when the flat was here, the council requested to see...
Hello. Apologies.
And as you recall, in March, the council requested to see site plan. Uh, a little more information would regard to the architecture and the overall, uh, block. So, basically, each lot are 30 feet wide, um, and includes, as I said, the townhomes or attached single-family. So, and there are blocks of five, four, and five units. So, the side corner lots are a little larger. They are 40 feet wide. So, um, and then that graphic is showing that the entrance to these townhomes, uh, the access is from the dead-end streets or courts. The, as the red arrow showing, that will be the entrance, and we'll go into details. These are the architectural elevations that the council wanted to see, uh, at the flat hearing last month. So, the applicant is proposing three type of conceptual renderings as shown on the, uh, slide. With regard to the pedestrian network, um, there are a number of sidewalks or pathways that are provided throughout the neighborhood. And then also, uh, is provided, obviously, five-feet-wide sidewalks that are required, and then, um, the sidewalks connect to, uh, the other pedestrian network of the, uh, of the city, and there is a slide showing how is the connectivity achieved. So, this is the, I believe, is one of the most important graphics of this presentation, because it shows exactly which are the, uh, the dead-end streets or courts, you know, which are the connectivities. So, as you see, the main access, and then, um, you also, and there is also a five-safety emergency access gate on the north end. And that was something that the fire department, Palm Beach County Fire Department required and was provided. So, and also on the south end, there is a pedestrian and roadcar access gate. And, but, let's pay attention, please, to the colors of the street. All the red colors are the dead-end streets or courts. And, um, so there are a total of 13 streets, and there is a total of 10 streets that are either, uh, that they are dead-end. So, if you do the math, they are, the applicant is requiring 77%, and we run it up to 80%, you know, uh, dead-end streets. So, there are, uh, basically 10 dead-end streets. So, this is the graphic that shows. With regard to the street design, the primary street has 50 foot right-of-way, as shown on this graphic, and then also has the, um, 10-foot-wide drive aisles and the five-foot pedestrian sidewalks on both sides of the street. And this specific, uh, development also is proposing, uh, on-street parking for guests. And this main primary street is the one connecting to the dead-end streets or courts. So, this is, uh, oh, yes. Continue. So, this is a part of the code, and I, we explain very in detail on the staff report, why are we using the Palm Beach County Code. I, uh, explained that on page two of the staff report. Well, as you all know, at this point, the city has a number of chapters as its own code. But then, any chapter that the city does not have yet, we need to rely on, on the county interim, uh, into the interim city code, which is the county code. So, that's the reason we are still using the county code. So, in the county code, I copy-pasted that from the code, is requesting, um, basically, uh, maximum 20% of the dead-end streets. So, in, uh, the length of those streets, single-family and residential, 900 feet, uh, up to 1,250 feet. So, those are the key information that is driven this application, so... As I mentioned before, the crossing, um, is, uh, proposing a number of the street and courts to access those, uh, units, those townhomes. So, in the number of places you access only through these dead-end courts. So, and you, so courts are dead-end streets and, uh, and exceed the 20% allowed by the code. So, that's the subject matter of this application. So, when we receive this type of application, the applicant has the option to apply for a variance. That's the reason we are here tonight. But, one is a, uh, a variance application we have in our code, Chapter Two, a very specific section. That's okay.
Sorry. That's not supposed to be.
That's good. Walk me out.
At least your reactions are...
It's off.
So, when the city receives this type of variance application, we have in our code, Chapter Two, uh, that specifically explains this, and I want to read it into the record. So, variances. The Planning and Zoning Board shall consider and find that all seven criteria listed below have been satisfied by the applicant prior to making a motion for approval of a variance. So, that is specifically in our code. Saying that, now, we are going to go one by one, those criteria, and so, and see if the applicant, you know, we, he provided on the staff report, you can see the applicant reply or answer, and then you can also see the city staff reply, uh, answer for those criteria. So, criteria A, a strict application of the, of the alias creates an undue, uh, unvaried or practical difficulty on the development of applicant's lots or parcel, and was not created by the action of the applicant. This is a very important criteria. And then, uh, city staff is, uh, showing what is the location of this M2 parcel. So, M2 site is constrained by its location. It's surrounded in one side for Pod PC5, which is the tax collector building, and on the other side, on the east side, is, is the SkyCo. So, the vehicular access is only through the Town Center Parkway South. And then, on, uh, also, on the south side, we have Persimmon Boulevard. However, because the location of this is so close of the intersection, so it cannot accommodate a vehicular ingress-egress. So, there are a number of constraints with this site. So, that's, uh, something that we will go over through the criteria. So, that was Criteria A. Criteria B. Special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, and which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same zoning district. So, we have mentioned before, uh, M2 path is constrained by its location. So, because only vehicular access are through Town Center Parkway South. And also, as I mentioned before, uh, also from Persimmon Boulevard. So, these sites, other sites that are in the same zoning district, with all boundaries adjacent to road, will not have justification to provide this number of dead-end streets. So, as I mentioned before, this is very important. If you have a site that is surrounded by, by streets, then, you know, the applicant could not be applying for these dead-end streets. In this case, this site is constrained by its location. Criteria C. Literate interpretation of the provision of this chapter would deprive the applicant rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district under the terms of this chapter and do work unnecessary and undue hardship on the applicant. Well, the interim code is requiring that maximum number of dead-end streets should be 20, 20%. The crossings is proposing 80%, so due, um, I believe is due to its peculiar land location as indicated in Criteria A and B. Criteria D. Non-negative impacts are or will be generated by the variance, and/or that any impact caused by the variance can be adequately mitigated. This Criteria D is very important, because can you imagine, um, approving a variance that will cause harm, you know, that will generate negative impacts? So, anytime before, uh, a, a variance is before this board, we need to look at very closely, what are the impacts? You know, what this can, uh, actually happen if this variance is approved? So, uh, the city engineer did a great job reviewing also this application and said, you know, so the plan meets criteria for, it meets for length. How long are these dead-end streets? So, the maximum allowed, uh, length is 900 feet, and these, uh, dead ends are 100 feet. So, from that point on, it's, it's meet code. So, and also, additional connection would not significantly change the vehicle or pedestrian travel time. City engineer recommends that the plan be approved in the core configuration. And also, uh, where I put the red arrow, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Department has no objection to the site plan. We were really close with the fire department, and we were, um, looking forward to receive the comment, to make sure that everything meets fire safety requirements, and they did not have objection to this. Criteria F. The variance granted is the minimum variance that will make possible the use of the land, building, or structure. Again, this criteria is asking, is this applicant requesting so many variances, or can they leave with less? So, let's be critical and really look at it closely. So, here is where how much the variance should be, you know, what is the extent of the impact, and, uh... So, and again, we, uh, did a, a review, a very close review of all the different criteria, and, uh, basically, the subject site plan and plot were reviewed by the city engineers and provided the following comments. You know, the plan meets criteria for length of dead-end streets. Uh, for example, even Willow Creek Drive, which is one of the main, uh, arterial, is 780 feet. And again, the most important thing is also fire safety approved these, uh, dead-end streets. Um, so basically, if granted a subject variance, it will make possible the use of Pod M2 and the development of crossing residential community. I wanted to show you again this graphic, and I added more information, because it's showing the main entrance, and also where the five-safety emergency access gate. Willow Creek, uh, is 780 feet, and the dead-end courts, which are in red, are 100 feet. So, those are part of the, um, of this variance analysis. G. Criteria G. The ground of the variance will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this chapter and land development regulations. So, and once we are reviewing a variance, we look at very close, is this application in compliance with all the, our other codes? What happened with height, lot coverage, you know, parking, setbacks? There is a number of criteria that, uh, we, we the staff, we the people review. So, and basically, it meets all the code requirements. So, and basically, it meets all the code requirements except for the dead end streets. So, for example, I have the next slide. Um, we went along to review a neighborhood park with Mr. Kieran, and the applicant is proposing passive parks with basically bench and a tree in those green areas, and then, is in compliance with the level of service for neighborhood parks. Criteria H. Financial hardship is not to be considered as sufficient evidence of a hardship in granting a variance. Because most of the applicant, they would say, well, I need a variance because it will cost me money. It will cost me, I need to do this. So, the finance part is not the main thing that when we are reviewing a variance. What is really hardship? In this case, is the location of that parcel, the location of parcel M1. So, I, again, this is the graphic that shows the constraints that parcel M1 has with all the PC5 in one side, M2, or Sky Cove on the other. Criteria R. The grant of the variance will not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Public welfare is always the core of every site plan review of everything what we do here in the city. We, we, we must meet standards for safety when we are reviewing any site plan, any application. So, and again, it meets all the criteria. And then, safety. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue has no objection to the crossing site plan. In the variance account, it will not be injurious to the area involved or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. How do we ensure that everyone that is interested in knowing what's happening in this city knows that a variance is being applied? Variance are a very serious matter. So, the city code has different, um, different items to ensure that we, we communicate with the public. So, one of them is the posting of property. So, the applicant must post these signs around the property, and we also receive the photo and the affidavit that the postings were located there. Why is that important? Because I have seen many times that they just advertise on the Palm Beach post. Well, not everybody read the post. So, when you are driving by a site and you see this sign, then you know that something is being considered at the city level. So, I believe those postings are extremely important. Another item that has our code is that we mail a notice to property owners within 300 feet of the subject site. So, the applicant provide the envelopes of all, and then also, the notice goes inside, and that is mailed to the 300 radius. And finally, yes, we also publish in the Palm Beach code the legal ad. So, there are three ways that variances are advertised because it's not every day that a local government is considering a variance. Based upon all these facts and findings, Planning and Zoning and Engineering Department are recommending approval of the started application. And also, Fire Rescue did not have any comments. We'll be back. And I understand Mr. Kieran has the presentation too.
Thank you.
Okay, I think the mask up here is permitted. I did get that, so first, first shot today. Pretty excited about that. Mr. Mayor, council members, for the record, I'm appearing here tonight on behalf of Mentos, and we're pleased to present parcel M2 to you, I'll give you two highlights of the project. Which is the best part we've been following? See, it's only there was a reason you're here tonight. Other than the AC, you know? All right, we'll go forward there. Okay, so Neil Saik gave a very thorough presentation. So, in the interest of time, I'll be brief and just really highlight some things that you might be interested in knowing. Obviously, parcel M2 is located just to the, to the immediate west of Pod M, Sky Cove, south of town center, the Adventure Park, and immediately east of it continues to the Tax Collector's Office, which is coming along quite well. The site you reviewed last week, but as Neil pointed out, 130 attached single family. We call those really typically in the industry townhomes. So, this is the first townhome community. I know a lot of people have been waiting for us. So, housing diversity to come into the community. On the screen is the, is the site plan. Neilson went over that. So, I've got some other context plans that I will show you. Here's a few of the, of the renderings of the various townhome buildings, attached single family. Mentos proposing three different designs. One would be, which is a bourbon transitional, and that's what you see on the screen right now. The second is a modern vermuta, so it's kind of refreshing. And the third is a kind of a coastal contemporary style. So, if many of you who are familiar with Mentos are familiar with their Artesia project, very, very successful down in Brownwood County in the Pembroke Heights area, extremely successful. So, this community very much so is being modeled after the Artesia community. And the layout and the design are very, very similar to what's very successfully been delivered down at Artesia. Here's a sneak preview of a couple of the floor plans. This is literally hot off the press. It's conceptually, and I have to give you all of the various waivers, but you can begin to see how the product will work. The nice part with, with townhomes, these are 30 feet wide. So, so often, we see with townhomes, 20-foot wide product or 24-foot wide. 30 feet really gives you the ability to break floor plan inside. They're only two stories. All of the townhomes will have a two, full two-size car garage. And again, most of them have room at two and a half, ranging 1,600 square feet plus to 2,100 square feet plus. So, nice, amply sized homes. And will provide certainly a different product size of what is being offered at Sky Cove, and then that being offered within the Groves and the other new communities being proposed here at Westlake. So, we're extremely excited. I know that many people have been asked, when is a townhouse product going to start? This is it, and so we're really excited about that. As Neilson pointed out, we are requesting a variance, and I think she did a pretty good job in her, in her review of kind of explaining, you know, why this request was there. It said, you, if you're aware, you've adopted a zoning code, but you've not yet adopted subdivision regulations. And so, when you do adopt subdivision regulations, the variance will no longer be required. But because we're kind of in between two jurisdictions now, we are required to provide a variance. And what we're asking for is approval to provide these basically 100-foot, what we call really courts, that provide access to a limited number of townhomes. Where they're actually their driveway, create really a private setting for each of the, of the homes. Here's a, a little aerial view or kind of a contact trap. It's just helping you understand how the community ties in. Couple of, one of the nicest parts about this community is walkable everywhere. You know, it's walkable to, you know, Grove Marketplace if you wanted to go to the marketplace. It's walkable immediately to the north. We align with King Fisher. When I drove by here tonight, King Fisher is paved, and that provides the access to basically what we would say the, the, the east side of town center, but to the Adventure Park. So, to live, if you're living here, you have great access, walk right on up to that Adventure Park, every single night, to the dog park. And then immediately to the west is the Tax Collector's Office. So, you can see how it gets to the site, it's very, very narrow on the, on the, along the Tax Collector's Office. And so, from a design perspective, we wanted our, our homes to front on and engage town center parkway. But where we were facing the Tax Collector's since that's a non-residential use, we wanted to have the relationship where the side of the home were, were fronting on that, that connection. Then Neilson pointed out, on the very south end, having an access point out onto Persimmon at that location, so close to the intersection, is something that we try not to do from a traffic engineering perspective. It goes into a turn lane. So, there we have what we, what we call as an alternative turnaround consistent with engineering standards that we provided. So, with that, really, our, our request is pretty simple. We're requesting your approval this evening. I think maybe it's, uh, well, I can stop, I can stop right there. We're requesting your, your approval this evening. We appreciate your pass. Your staff is recommending approval. The city engineer is recommending approval. The city fire department has recommended approval. So, we're anxious to get started with this community and look forward to your favorable consideration. Certainly appear to answer any questions if you have them through there.
Thank you, Mr. Hennig. Do you have any questions?
I don't, I have a few questions. Yes, sir. Some, some logistical stuff. Is there a slide that shows the street parking?
There, there, there is the on-street. I have a slide that shows the street parking, and I don't know why it didn't show up. But, yeah, if I can get just a quick forward, I actually have the enlargement of it.
We can just enlarge it.
There we go. Oops, back one. There you go. I, I put this in just for you, Councilman O'Connor. Just so that when you ask a question, you have it.
He's going to ask.
So, throughout the entire community, we've provided on-street parking. And this, this is a great exhibit because it shows how the, how the private courts work, all the driveways are pavers. We do a special landscape treatment at each of those intersections to make it kind of a unique statement. And then, as you pointed out, we do have on-street parking that's there. It would be my guess because we have a car garage and we have two cars within, within the motor.
How many of those spots, like?
I do not have the exact number for you, but there's close to 20-some parking spaces throughout the community.
No, I'd say those are car.
They're all for car, or, or they're 23 feet long? So, maybe accommodated car, or small, small vehicle, small pickup truck.
And that falls under the master HOA regulates? That the own HOA?
Yeah, well, we'll have the own HOA just as you would have in the hammocks or in the, within the Meadows. So, there, it has a separate guidelines on the utilization of the basis in terms of overnight parking of certain types of vehicles. But they're intended to provide convenient parking for everybody who wants to live within the community.
Just because it was hard to tell from the other graphics, now I can see it clearly. There's, there's equal driveway space in front. So, it's two cars in the garage and two cars in the driveway?
That is correct.
Excellent. And then, so when it comes to these dead ends, again, it's hard from the other graphics, but I guess if somebody takes a wrong turn who doesn't live there, they just use one of the driveway spaces to make a U-turn.
And then, there's actually a little room down at the end of those. Each of these courts, and working with your GIS department, will have its own unique name. So, as you're driving down, you know, you'll very clearly be able to see the addressing. You know, and I don't know the name. I know what the name is. It's not Liberty Court. But I do know, Mr. City Manager. But each had their own unique name. But, yeah, they're very, very short. So, it's, uh...
Would it have to be a three-point turn to get over there? Or is there enough room to actually turn a car around?
You know, a small car, typically, we go into the garage or into one of the parking areas and back out. Or simply just back out to short backup space.
So, graphic is real bad. It shows how short it is. But I was a little bit concerned. A big fire truck had to get in. How's that fire truck going to get out? I guess it just backs out.
Yeah, we meet all of Palm Beach County Fire Rescue standards. They typically allow 150 feet. And so, this satisfies their requirements.
All right, two more questions. That golf cart gate, is it automated? How does that work? Somebody has to get out of that cart and open it?
It can keep that. No, it, it, it's not automated where it would open, but with, with a key pop that each of the home, each of the homeowners would have so that that gate can open and they can get their...
So, they have to manually open it?
Yeah, it's not, it's not automatic.
How, how it stay open as you drive your car?
It's still easy. It's not even stay open anymore. With a, with a spring, spring.
And then finally, we have a price point. And the starting price.
I knew you were going to ask that. So, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you the first, the part in line. As you're probably well aware, right now, commodity prices and for housing are far, far going crazy. So, it's, it's difficult to quote prices. So, to really, to stay low where Sky Cove is. And because basically, this is an attached product below the habit, and below the communities that are currently in construction. But just, just afraid with, with the chain, rapid changing with plywood and all commodities, it's difficult to state. But the whole intent of introducing this type of product, which is a little bit smaller, a little bit denser, is to be able to provide it at a better price point. So, that, that I can tell you.
Okay. And only other key question I had because I lived in some, a long time ago is what type of stuff material between the units, I'm sure walls are there.
The particular unit will, if I'm not mistaken, have a block wall underneath it? Yeah. It'll certainly sound dampened, you know, completely. And with today's world, you know, with the way that building materials are, they're very, very tight, that's the worst.
Thanks for your...
Thank you, Councilman.
Do have one more. But, GPS and furniture delivery, the whole kind of things. How do we avoid furniture truck or whatever turning around and people's driveways possibly damaging stuff in there?
Well, there's several, several reasons. These alleyways are fairly wide, the little courtyard. So, there, there's 24 feet of pavement area, you know, and they are very, very short. So, we pay close attention to the turning radiuses at each of the intersections so that they're ample enough to provide for service vehicles. And then, actually, at the, the end of the street as you approach Persimmon, that particular turnaround is designed specifically for semis, fire trucks. It meets all the requirements of Palm Beach County and of Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. So, it's, and this particular product design, again, is something that's been proven. So, this has been not only received very well, but has been completed in Pembroke Heights for several years, I think five, six, seven years that they've completed it.
With the dead ends?
With the dead ends, yes, sir.
Excellent.
Any further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hennig.
Thank you. I'm a city clerk. Do you need my card, please?
Resolution PG 2021-01. A resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board for the City of Westlake, Florida, relating to a variance request from the applicant Mentos PBLH LLC for the crossings of Westlake, Pod M2. A 130-unit townhome project located at 5075 Seminole Pratt Whitney Road. Said variance approval will allow 80% dead-end streets where the city's interim unified land development code, Article 3, Section 2A, Subsection 2A, allows a maximum of 20% dead-end streets in the City of Westlake, Palm Beach County, Florida, providing for an effective date.
We have a motion. Motion to approve variance 2021-01.
On second. We have a motion to approve by Board Member O'Connor, seconded by Vice Chair Long Robinson. Roll call. Board Member O'Connor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Long Robinson?
Yes.
Chair Manning?
Yes.
Board Member Paul?
Yes.
Board Member Crump?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you all so much. Thank you for having us out here today. Such a beautiful city.
Good to see you.
Love to be here. Thank you so much, sir.
Good to see you. And I couldn't help with noticing your socks. It was also nice, too.
Thank you, sir.
Before I adjourn the meeting, I'd like to, uh, welcome again our alternate board member. And, uh, I look forward to working with you in the future. On that, I will adjourn. We'll take a couple of minutes before we start the regular council meeting.
We adjourned at six fifty-five P M. City Council meeting will begin shortly. Meeting details are available on the screen.
Not at all, but I just asked the question, I don't know.
Thank you so much.